Any comments to the order? First item on the agenda is the education by Mayor Merrill Mingle to his one of our Alamo police captains. Will he come up?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Michael. Let us pray. Father, we come today to thank you for our mayor, our city council members, and all of our city officials. We pray for your wisdom, guidance, strength, your grace, your mercy, and justice to rest upon not only their seats, but their lives as well. Father, we pray your divine hand be upon them, as well as their families and their loved ones. Father, we pray for this wonderful city of Alamo. We ask that you be Lord, provider, protector of all of us, and give us peace. We ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight and all who attend in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Consider approval of minutes for November 9th and then November 10th adjourn session, November 16th regular session, and November 16th closed session.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Hallard, second. By Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. Hallard in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does the motion carry? In just a few minutes, we're going to adjourn, but first I want to give our council member Chris Bramble a moment of privilege.
Following the election, I asked Mayor Michael if I could have this few moments of privilege to make some parting comments. He replied, "Of course, Chris, my normal practice at this time, at times like this, I ask losers to speak at their final meeting." So here's the most recent loser. What I really want to do first is tell all of you on council on how much I've enjoyed working with you and the corporate attitude we showed in confronting the issues of our city. I thought we worked together very well, and I hope you felt the same way. Secondly, I want to say a few words to the staff. Ross, when I came on council five years ago, it was potholes, potholes, potholes. Now I would challenge anyone to find a pothole on a city street. I recall even on some occasions in those early years, someone would tell me about a pothole, and I remember telling them that if they would buy the asphalt to fill it up, we'd name it after them. Never did get a taker. Judy, I doubt if there's a city in North Carolina in which utilities are as efficient and effective as ours. We may lose electricity momentarily, but it always comes back quickly, at least where I live. Thank you for that. David in Pierre, I feel safe. I will never forget the time I came to in my house and looked up to see people in police and fire uniforms who had arrived quickly to get me out of a bad situation. Where I live and work, I see and hear a lot of police and fire cars and trucks heading to some emergency, and every time I hear that, I thank you and your folks for being there when we need you. Kevin, you and your folks have a tough job. What you do and how you do it has a great deal to do with the attitudes of people in business and the people who want to go in business. Wherever and whenever you can, please emphasize service over rigid enforcement. And now back to council. Just because we have a lot of good things happening in Alamo, it does not mean you can relax. Much remains to be done, and I beg you to be proactive, not reactive, in dealing with the future of our city. Let me give you just a few things that need attention. One, stop talking about Alamo. Start talking about and be concerned about Greater Alamo. I got this from the Thanksgiving service put on by GAM. That stands for Greater Alamo Ministerial Association. The population of Alamo is not a little over 16,000. The population of Alamo is 26,640. That's the number of people who live in code 28001 and call Alamo home. And probably many more than that consider Alamo home, even they don't live in the city limits or have a 28001 zip code. That's right, a half the population of Stanley County who consider Alamo home, and all of them are your constituents. Two, finish bringing gigabyte internet service to the entire city. We made great strides in putting fiber along the main streets and arteries throughout the city, but a lot of people who do not live along those arteries may have good internet service, but not the great gigabyte service that would put us ahead of the cities and towns with which we compete in our economic development programs. Three, for heaven's sakes, work on this downtown. Look at the number of empty, underutilized, and rundown buildings. We now have three people working in economic development in the city, and when one couples those with the county's Economic Development Office, Visitors and Convention Bureau, Chamber of Commerce, and Stanley County Community College's Small Business Center, we should have a much better downtown than what we have. Keep this in mind. To people outside Alamo and Stanley County, the face of our city and county is downtown Alamo, our county seat. Four, if you plan to compete for new industry in whatever way you may decide to do it, you're doomed to failure with our local school system. Sophisticated companies and factories aren't locating in sites where the school system consists of four tiny high schools, none of which have a full complement of vocational, cultural, and educational offerings to prepare their employees' children to compete for admission to the better colleges and other post-secondary schools. Think of how many professionals and company employees may work in Alamo but will not live in Stanley County. See me after this meeting, and I'll tell you about some of them. But I'll bet you already know many of them. Note this as a perfect example. Alamo High School has a 14-piece marching band. My grandkids in another state go to a high school that has a symphony orchestra and everything that's implied in that. Five, it's great to have Pifer, but there are other opportunities for programs in higher education. Sooner or later, Stanley Community College will want a program in culinary arts. That's not at the top of their list right now, but it is coming, and the only place it makes sense to put a program like that is downtown Alamo. Right now, I can think of two adjoining buildings that would be ideal for such a program. Someone needs to work with the colleagues, the commissioners, and Wayne Sasser to make that happen. Five, I would not tell Keith Tunnel how to do his job, but one of the largest chemical companies in the world is named, get this, Alamo Chemical. That company recently moved its headquarters from Louisiana to Charlotte. Surely we can get Alamo Chemical to put some branch of that company in the city with which it shares its name. Six, Pifer. Pifer isn't through expanding in Alamo. Please, I beg you, do everything you possibly can to make those expansions possible. Buy property and give it. Arrange for parking. Do whatever it takes to help Pifer turn Alamo into an academic community. There is no finer place on earth to live than an academic community. You will reap rewards that you cannot even dream of right now. Several years ago, even before we had Pifer coming to downtown, we passed something in council to name a section of Highway 52 North, Pifer Parkway. You're all aware of the holdup on that. Go back and revisit it. That five-mile limitation no longer makes that impractical. We have Pifer in the city, and we're now much closer tied with the main campus in Mausenhamer than ever before. And just think of the aura that comes with having a university name prominent in our landmarks. Lastly, thank you for being very important people in my life over the last five years. I love you all and wish for you the very best as you lead Alamo into a very critical time in its history. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm gonna go get that sandwich that's left.
Council, have you talked about agenda adjustments? Number one, consider renewal of an agreement with Southland Kemper Company to farm out Alamo business synergy. Number two, to talk about the five-point intersection. And the third one will be add-on to our closed session to add real estate and consult with the city attorney.
May I approve?
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Hall, do further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain the motion, then we adjourn, and then we will allow our judge, our senior resident Superior General Kevin Bridges, to take over and do the swearing-in.
Moved and done.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Judge Bridges will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Certainly is a pleasure of mine. I'm very happy to be asked to participate in this swearing-in ceremony, and without further ado, we'll begin with the mayor. If you would please step down, sir. You have someone to hold back? Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dr. Merrill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As mayor.
As mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Sign here, sir. You are quite welcome. Next, we will address Martha Sue Hall.
Just moved.
And that's enough. All right, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Martha Sue Hall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As city council member.
As city council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Seems like I've signed other things.
I think you have. Dexter Townsend, please come forward. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dexter Townsend.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As city council member.
As city council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Bill Aldridge, come down, please. All right, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bill Aldridge.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As city council member.
As city council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Benton Dry. Please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Benton Dry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As city council member.
As city council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes the ceremony. Thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Judge, for once again coming out and doing this for us. Then if you'll take your seat, I'll call us back to order. At this time, I want to come around and let all those that have been elected or re-elected are most privileged to say a few words, and I will start with just saying a few simple words. Number one, I want to say thank you to my family, especially my wife, who allows me to do this and the opportunity to move forward with our city. I also want to thank all the citizens who gave me this opportunity again, and I look forward to what we will accomplish over the next four years. I also want to say thank you to all of our staff for all that you do for us. Our job is much easier, fellas, than what you do for us. And last, I want to say thank you to the council, because you're a pleasure to work with. Thank you very much. Ms. Hall, would you like to make some comments?
I never pass up an opportunity to make comments. I just want to say thank you, and I had no idea. I thought with COVID that we would be doing this by ourselves. I feel like a lone ranger out here since I didn't ask Dan to come, but he would have been here, and he's probably going to be really upset when I tell him everybody had a spouse, but that's okay. Thank you to staff, first and foremost, to the citizens of the city who have entrusted in me their vote of confidence for yet another term. I won't go with anything else except thank you, and I look forward to the next four years. And those words of Dr. Bramble before he left. I think the things that we've got to remember more than anything is for us to be proactive and not wait for something to happen, but us continue to be proactive in everything that we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Towns?
I too, just like the mayor and Mayor Protem Hall. I share the same sentiments, and I want to stand in special thanks to, first of all, to my family, my wife, and my daughter, to the great citizens of Alamo, in particular, the constituents of District 1 who put faith and reelected me. Although I'm ran out of hose, trust me when I say I don't take that opportunity to serve and represent you on this council for granted. I thank you. I hate that Dr. Bramble is not in here. I just wanted to tell him, thank him for his service. You know, even prior to Dr. Bramble coming on council, I used to follow some of his work. In downtown, you know, we always refer to him as not only as Main Street champions, but Dr. Bramble was more than just a champion for downtown. Through his service on council, I would say that he's a true ambassador for the city of Alamo. It gives me great honor and pleasure just knowing that his predecessor, Dr. Mr. Dry coming on board. It's good to know that he shared that same work, that he's been on council with us before, and I'm sure that he'll continue to work hard as he's done previously. And welcome back, Councilmember Dry. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to your wife, Martha, for all her love and support. To what the mayor said earlier, a lot of folks look at these meetings twice a month or sometimes once a month, and they think, hey, those folks will be together for a couple hours and then they go on about their lives. But I can assure you that there's a lot more accomplished in this role than that. So again, thank you, Martha, for all your love and support. I'm very excited. I think that we are in a really unique opportunity here in Alamo. I think the next four years are going to be some defining moments, and I'm super excited to be sitting up here representing the constituents of District 3. I'd like Councilmember Townsend to run out of hose. So if I wouldn't have gotten elected, I would probably have moved out of town. But nevertheless, we're in a resource for everything. I also would like to welcome Councilmember Dry back to the council. We had the privilege of serving together. I too am very fond of Dr. Bramble and all his contributions to our city. There's no doubt in anybody's mind that this love and compassion for Alamo. So I know he's not in here, but I would also, I would like to encourage Dr. Bramble to stay involved. He has a lot to give to our community, and I hope that he will find, we can find some resources for him to do that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
It is an honor and a privilege to be back on council. My wife can tell you that the last two years probably weren't the best, and her husband, listening to me talk about what was going on. As I talked to Ronnie shortly thereafter, I said, "I want to stay involved, and I want to thank you for putting me on his local resources commission." Some good things are happening, great people to work with. We are blessed to have a great staff who cares a great deal about this community, not just the department they're working in. They all interface together, and that's what makes Alamo a wonderful place to live. Running at large against Martha Sue and Chris was a challenge. Chris and I have known each other a long time, and I concur with all the things that he said and what he brought to council. And we spoke many times about being a Democrat or a Republican, and he said to me that when I was coming off council that, yes, he is a Democrat, but thinks like a Republican. And I thought that was pretty cool. I do want to thank the citizens of Alamo for their support, letting me out and coming to me and asking me what I consider running again. And with their support, I'm glad to be back and working with the best group of people that in my life I have ever worked with, and I thank each of you very much.
Thank you very much. Council, moving on. Next is election of our mayor pro tem. If you choose your candidate council, that is normally by ballot, unless council chooses to suspend the rules.
I move that we suspend the rules. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I move that be nominated Mayor Protem on Sue Hall.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to reappoint. Mayor Protem on the Sue Hall, second. By Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number eight, consider appointment of the city manager. I need a motion.
I will approve of Michael Ferris as city manager.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to reappoint. Michael Ferris is city manager, second. By Councilmember Louder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number nine, consider appointment of the city attorney.
With approval?
Of?
Rick. Rick Burton, sorry.
Motion by Councilmember. Rick Burton as city attorney, second. Second, by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is whether you want to allow the city manager to do another appointments. He typically has in the past, and he has stated in his agenda, if he is allowed to do that, he intends to appoint Finance Director Colleen Conroy, Assistant Finance Director Jacob Weevil, City Clerk Sidney Stone, Deputy City Clerk Mickey Hardy, and Michael Ferris, so we can have plenty of coverage if somebody is out. And Tax Collector Richard Lenzley, out? Lenzley out?
Approved.
Lenzley out.
I got a motion by Councilmember Hall, second. By Councilmember Louder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, we're going to stand in recess for about five minutes. Council, we're going to stand in recess for about five minutes. I have one and a half delegation, Christine Amos, 31746, Celeste Dry, Alamo. To talk about the clarification of Resolution 2015, which is in the consent agenda. And let me make a couple comments. One, a couple of councilmember meetings up to the, 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 the resolution before you tonight does nothing but set the public hearing. Council approved the amount for these curb developers in the summer when we approved all of them in one time. The amount would be $23.21 per foot for every road project for the each, each property owner if council decides to move forward and do this. Christine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to request the removal from the consent agenda for item number one. And the reason for that is because like Mayor Michael has said, I think that it warrants additional clarification. I know that y'all are saying the cost of linear square footage, that's $23.00 per square foot. The resolution did not say that. In Section Three of the resolution, it does specify that there is 100% of total project costs borne to the residents that have signed the petition and anyone that's owned that property, which I am one of the property owners there. So I think that needs to be said more clearly in the resolution. Secondly, it does reference a few session laws, one of which I found only related to water and sewer infrastructure. The second one, which is Session Law 1995, in Chapter 655, can't find that anywhere. So I'm just asking for clarification to be put in that resolution that it's not to exceed costs at $23.21 per linear foot. Also, there are costs that, well, the reason for that is because there are other costs that I think will be born in this project, such as catch basins and engineering drawdown plans. And I don't want to be responsible for paying any portion of that in the total project cost, which I feel like the resolution is a little bit arbitrary in how it's stated. So I just want that to be clear in the resolution. I know that it's potentially going to be cleared up in the public hearing request, but I feel like it needs to be cleared up now before the resolution actually passes. And it's just a simple.
This resolution is just to pass the public hearing. The, the resolution will come back before council, if they approve this tonight in January, will have that written in and specified exactly what it requires.
But I want you to look specifically at Section Three of the resolution that's before you, because it does state in there 100% project cost will be borne to the residents. It does not say $23.00 per square foot. That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question? So Christine, so that was the only specific thing, you said that you found something that you could not.
Section, Section Three of that.
No, 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 you said something about, something about, maybe you said quote 655 or something?
Section Three of that same resolution references Section 655 of a 1995 session law?
That's 1995 session law.
And it's in the resolution under Section Three. You can read the Section Three, it says it in there, but I can't find that resolution, or, I'm sorry, that session law anywhere.
That's interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, the consent agenda. We have five items. Number one is to consider a resolution setting up a hearing to consider.
I missed, I missed the ministry reports.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I did skip over that.
Yes, you did.
Keith, I didn't mean to, ignore you. The ministry reports, director of development, Keith, to provide, to provide that data on the activity of retail strategy. Mayor, we appreciate you giving me some time tonight to go over this contract with retail strategies. Spent a lot of time with them over the past sixteen weeks since I've been here and been quite impressed. The companies located in Birmingham, they do a lot of regional and national recruitment, marketing for us. Electric City should be committed for being a partner with us, they will pay for this. The main core rivers where all retail is located is their major focus. And they provide quite a bit of data analysis for us that we can also use in the downtown area as well, the Main Street program. As we revamp our strategy and put together new plans for downtown redevelopment, this data, this information will come in very handy to staff as we move forward. They have access to over 10,000 retailers. That's something that you couldn't do in-house if you tried to do the marketing on your own. And they've been very successful. They brought in eleven, directly eleven national retail businesses to the city. They have four others in the pipeline that I can't mention tonight because of contractual reasons, but we could go into close session if you wanted to know more about that. There's also a new marketing plan that they just created for the city that I can share with you in close session as well, because there's some confidential contractual information in that eighty-five page report as well. Total investment that they have helped bring to the city is just under 27 million. Over 200 jobs in retail. Sales tax revenues have increased more than 43% since that first year of the contract in 2014 through 2019. And also revenues that can identify the exact amount, but we do know that with those new businesses coming into the retail core, there's been increases in electric, water, sewer, and those revenue streams as well. Plus, a lot of these companies are regional and national chains that support the community and city causes. That's just a picture of some of the national retailers that are in the market. And I want to thank the highest for providing this information to me. You can see that the retail growth was somewhat flat there for several years until 2014, when the contract first started. Annual contract to do this work is $25,000 a year. I would recommend that we continue to do the work with retail strategies because that's a good return on investment. You can see that the increase in sales tax revenue has been quite impressive since that first year of the contract in 2014. A lot of this is data and analysis and information goes pretty in depth. I can provide that to you. If you'd like to see more of that information, I can send it to you by email. If you'd like to see the deeper down into the data information. But it's helpful to me and the staff as we recruit and work with retail strategies to have a partner that has the, the wherewithal to bring that data to us without us having to do a lot of research ourselves. Just some of the projects we're working on now, again, I came to go into a lot of detail here in public. We'll go into close session if you'd like, different projects they're in the quarter. There's four projects in the pipeline now that they believe the first quarter of 2021 will announce in Alamo. So you will see additional projects that will land in creating jobs and investment in the city. And you have a copy of the presentation, I have a paper copy here at the lobby, including the city Alamo retail flyer that they generate for us. I can go into close session and provide you more detail on the retail report if you'd like. And then also we can do an economic development review in close session in January, where we wanted to do that, seeing. My recommendation is with also the success of the partnership of retail strategies, that the city entered into another year of that agreement at $25,000. I think the agreement ends in the end of April. And I would recommend highly that the city proceed with that contract for another year, because it has been very successful for the city and its retail recruitment efforts. Can entertain any questions that you might have? Governor?
Yeah, I do. Actually, I think probably the reason you're here for the rest of the night, Keith, is I asked Michael Ferris about a month ago what the latest was. And I really wanted to know this year. I wanted to know what they've done since about July of one, okay? And I know that in the past, they've been, they've come and they've made a presentation. I know COVID has kept that off, and that's what I really was looking for. It's not all the background, because we, we know what's going on because I've been here. So I still want to know the last six months, or these past six months. I'd like to know, and I don't know the answer to this, when we've had a leakage report done. They did that originally for us, and I think they updated it at least once. I don't know if they've updated it again. But I think that's a very important tool for us to have, is to update the leakage report. And then what they've done this past six months. And I don't see a copy of what you just, you made.
I've got a copy right here.
Is that a copy for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Because I just think that's important. Just, we'll pass it on to everybody.
But.
But I think the issue is that the last six months is what I would like to know.
I can answer some of that, Councilwoman. Since I arrived in the middle of October, I've worked closely with them. They have updated the leakage report.
Good.
That is part of the overall eighty-five page retail strategy that they've updated for the city. And I'd be happy to share that in close session with council, because there are some projects that are named in that, in that document that would not be proper to release in public session. So I'd be happy to go into executive session and cover that with you, if you'd like. But we've updated all the data. I did ask them to update the profile as well, because some of the information wasn't a little bit hidden back to 2018, so I didn't get them to update the motions. Up to date data that's available to us as of right now, which is pretty much 2019 data.
I'll need the matters that we've already voted to go into close session on related to the.
They are.
Something we need to, well, we can do that.
We can do that again. Further questions? Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Your Minister, Count, if you're ready, anyone have any questions? Moving into the consent agenda, if I, consider a resolution setting up a hearing to consider addition for assessing installation of curb developers on areas of shore. Fourteen, street legislature, first legislature in church requested closure of North Street for a choke service. That's on Christmas Eve in front of the church. And fifteen is 2,000 property tax trials that we have to do during the year. And sixteen is orders 2032 budget amendments. And seventeen, order 2031 to appropriate additional capital fund program revenues in Department of Public Council.
Your Honor, I'd like to pull off thirteen and fourteen. But before asking for fourteen, just wondering if.
I already clarified it.
You've already clarified it, we're good?
No, I have no problem.
We're no problem with fourteen?
No problem with fourteen.
Okay, so then I would like just to pull thirteen off, just for clarification.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Hall, pull thirteen off into true fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Second by Councilmember Howard, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Most of them approved the consent agenda items fourteen through seventeen. Or did we just?
I put it all in one moment. And now we have number thirteen to discuss.
And I just want to, if I may, I just, I just, it's got me interested in just the comments that Christine brought before us. I know that this is only, that what's before us is just to set the public hearing for January, January fourth. That's what this is for tonight, this resolution sets the public hearing. But I'm just, it's got me, I guess, interested to see what she was saying about the 100% of the costs versus the per, per foot cost. And I'm wondering if there's any reason why we do that. I mean, it's interesting to me.
I may be wrong. I take it to be 100% of the 2032, 2021. Mr. Ferris, do you, or Mrs. Burge, do you interpret it any?
So in the petition in Section Three, so if you don't look at the resolution, go back to the petition, Section Three is.
Uh-oh, do that again, I can't hear her.
So if you look at the petition, in Section Three is a petition, you're referencing the local bill for Alamo in 1995, and that Alamo is the method of fee assessment, and that's the method that we're referencing 100% of the cost in the resolution. The fees that I mentioned, this cost, this resolution is just to set. The public hearing will come back with a final assessment resolution that will have the cost in there, but cost at this point is a little beforehand, because we haven't decided what council is going to move forward. But the cost will be mentioned in the final assessment resolution, and the bill has records in there specifying that it will be a per foot fee, how the costs are set. It just doesn't mention the dollar, because it changes.
So that will be, that would be in what's brought up on at the public hearing?
We will review the public hearing and then adopt a final assessment resolution with the actual fee.
Okay.
Further comments? Mrs. Burge and Mrs. Amos's comment, she said that she was having issues or challenged by locating the information, I think it was Chapter 655, is that correct?
Yes, and I have a copy of the bill with me. It's on the Northern Island General Assembly website.
Okay, okay. Just for a full disclosure and transparency, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's totally available.
Okay.
Further comments?
Move to set the public hearing.
Second by Councilmember Howard, facts of resolution sets up the hearing for January the fourth.
Sorry.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, number eighteen, consider approval of Morgan Road duty subdivision. This is another subdivision that's one piece of land that they're going to separate into five pieces, five different tracks where they can build five different houses.
Back to Morgan Road, right, Ken?
Yeah.
Across the street from actually where the other was.
What the hell was?
What's the whole of this?
Um, yes, so this is a, it's hard to read that. So two acre track, two acre track on Morgan Road owned by Allen Doody. And as a mayor said, creating five lots from that. There's no additional infrastructure to be added. It is along Morgan Road. So it's a plot right there. This is owned R10. All of these should be well over 10,000 square feet. I think the smallest one is going to be about 14,000. They go to the sidewalk as shown right there on plan. This will be optional for feet and lieu. Apart from that, as I said, no other infrastructure should be added.
Councilman, any questions?
This was reviewed by planning board last Thursday, and they did approve it unanimously. Recommend for, for, for.
More than a question?
I'm over, we set a.
Motion by Councilmember Council, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 19, consider payment of property damage claim. Ms. Hall, we brought this from you.
So in front of you at your desk, I have put a packet of information. And what is in your placeholder in the agenda is just basically a quick overview. If you look at the letter that the petitioner gave to me, I just got it this weekend, she actually, it did happen on the 12th. If you read that front page, it tells, in her words, what happened. She is a single, single mom, recently widowed, and just couldn't get here with three little people, and I said, don't worry about it. Bottom line is, she, the night it happened, city staff came out, police department came out. She was nothing but just absolutely appreciative of everyone's attention and time and professionalism. She spoke with Judy and was, again, very appreciative of what was going on. They were, she was told to, to, that someone from North County League with risk management would call her about our insurance, if our insurance was going to be taken care of it. And I think what happened was, is when she realized it wasn't, she couldn't understand why. She, as of this weekend and just this weekend, got a estimate on, from her car insurance. And I will tell you that I have marked at the very bottom of it, page one, I've circled it, that's the letter. Page two, page one was her letter. Page two is her notification that risk management did not accept liability for the city, and that's who we would use. And if you flip back to page three, which is the last page of her car insurance estimate, it's showing you how much damage was totally done and her adjustment of her deductible and how much her insurance is going to pay for that car. It all happened a month ago, almost a month ago, and she's just now getting, getting that done. I think she was waiting on her, did I not leave you a set, Martha?
No, I just took his.
I am so sorry. She is, was waiting on our insurance before she contacted her insurance. So what she is totally out is that deductible of $250. I'm not going to, I'm not an adjuster, I don't do this regularly, but I can't see, based on what happened, based on her comments, based on what the city staff wrote up on their incident report, based on what happened, I can't see why it could not be our responsibility. But I am suggesting that we help at least pay that deductible in this situation. Michael, I'm sorry, I thought I had made enough copies here.
That's fine.
Now, that's another set.
Thank you. Questions?
Counselor, I totally agree with Councilmember Hall with this. I've worked with the league for many years on restoration projects. And the thing that got me when I read this was that they found no neglect on the city. That, to me, is very ambiguous when we have a building in town that a water bank burst, and we take care of it as a city through the league. I just thought that their verbiage here makes, makes no sense as to even what we pay, pay them to do anything. But there's no way we would know that that would have even been in disrepair. Things happen, it's an act of God. And I can certainly understand Mrs. Burge's concerns. I think she's handled it quite well. And I'm glad that her insurance is going to pick it up. And Councilmember Hall, if you're making a motion, I'll second that.
I would do that, thank you.
The motion is for the.
To pay the deductible. You know, I mean, it still bothers me that they didn't accept liability for it, but that's the least I think we do at this point.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, reject the deductible. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 20, the electric vehicle housing program, you have a memo in your agenda, Mr. Ferris, tell us what the city has done, and that we're moving forward with this, and that he has appointed an employee to be in charge of them, let that back when the grant comes available. We can't apply for that though. I think it's in January, if that's correct, Mr. Ferris. What we need to decide tonight is, do we want to proceed with doing that, number one? And two, are we going to charge for it? And I'll just make a comment, I think, yes, we should do one up here, right behind the buildings over here in that courthouse where we kind of had some preliminary discussion probably a year ago about doing it if it comes available. And I think that's the location to do it. That way people could park there and walk down town and eat lunch or shop, be close to them. And I'm sorry, I don't agree with giving free electricity. I think they should pay just like anybody else.
Like right here, close to the drive thru?
Yeah, right here, yeah, right side of the drive thru.
At least, at least the medium range charger, not the high speed.
Not the high speed.
I think most of them do, like cars.
And most of them do chargers, that's correct. Credit, like a credit card or something like that.
How many, how many of these do we have in the city? Did Martin Smith not put one in?
Martin put one in personally. We have none, I believe, in the city yet. This would be one that we would have to mark off, two parking spaces. And it would be one unit, but it would feed two vehicles.
So it's a total cost through that?
Yeah. The, the way I understand it is the $5,000 should cover this level two charging station now. If, if we had to do some reworking of the electric system and a lot of concrete work to get it installed, that could add to our cost. But what's being proposed, we have electric, we have parking spots existing, so the literature provided indicates that that should cover most of the cost of this type of charging station. The only reason we wouldn't consider one of our park locations is because of the internet access is, I'm just trying to, if we determine a second loca- location, I see no requirement for internet access.
Well, they have to have internet access if they were to use a credit card.
It would be good, somehow we couldn't incorporate it into one of our parks, but, you know.
Because people could say.
You can't, I know there's, there's X amount. About $25,000.
When it's gone, it's gone.
It's gone. And if we're not going to put it in on day one, probably we'll not get it.
Let's say it's still a couple, but I have no idea what the best location for another one would be.
Do we have any idea on how many electric cars and we have registered in Stanley County?
I don't believe this would be so much for folks in Stanley County. I think it's, I remember being at that Electric Cities Conference a year ago, not, yeah, 18 months ago or whatever, and hearing them say, hearing folks that have them say that it's basically, that they look up on when they're driving. They plan their trip on where there's electric charging stations.
If you look at the map, maps of charging stations all over the state, they're wearing the big dudnot.
Yeah.
There's almost none around, I think of the Bayesboro, I'm going to look it up while I'm there. There's. I guess I may be a little bit different from you there, Chris. I'm maybe too aggressive because what I have been known with some of these communities, some of the fast foods and retailers that are putting in now are actually putting one on their parking lot in a lot of cities. So they draw some, draw people to their business. So I agree with what uptown, so if we draw people to our business, that's paying.
Yeah, to me, there's nowhere else for them to put it. There's no private property. But you think these big shopping centers, they can put it anywhere they want. The main reason to me is to have, when people do plant a trail, your house on that, oh, we're going to go around also because there's not huge lanes limit on electric vehicles.
I think also, we've been in that big dudnot hole for a lot of years. And anything that we can do, obviously, is going to be proactive because by, at least in the 2030s, most everything is going to be electric. That Cadillac is going to be totally electric. We see more and more every day from automakers doing it. And I think we'd be remiss not to have that as part of our uptown. It's going to, you know, when they come, I think they need to see it on the map. And whether they know about Alamoor or not, at least it gives them one more reason to come here.
Could we consult with some of the other municipalities to find out cost, what are people charging for such a service? Because, give us some idea maybe.
Yeah, I think Electric Cities could help us with that. What we need tonight is, are we going to charge? And by a location, so we know where to move forward. But yes, I agree, we need to find out what other locations are charged.
And I like the, go ahead.
One, there's some grants available.
That's what we're looking at tonight. We've got to be ready to apply in January. We have to pay for it if they reimburse us.
But we get.
For the equipment. So that's what we're trying to do tonight, to be ready so we can put that brand in on the day it comes up. That little bit of money that we've got, we'll not go long.
Yeah, my, thank you for a second location. I like the location, I like the idea of putting it in one of the parks. The holdback for me, the positive thing is that that would get somebody into the parks. The holdback would be, is if it takes two or four hours.
It's going to take a while.
Yeah, for this medium charging, I think it takes a while, then I don't know what folks would do. And some of our parks, Lisa, do some of our parks have internet access? None of them do?
What about market station, kind of, it's closer to the trails, the greenway.
That's, yeah, that's right.
And still, close to downtown, I think that's, you know, for a second location. My other suggestion, I mean, any place is possible. The grant does require internet access, and of course, we have to have electricity. So another option could be the parking lot at Main and First, if you want something else. That's not very far from the first one, but if we're thinking downtown, there's a very visible location. While council was talking, I was looking up Plug In NC, which shows locations of electric vehicle charging stations. There's one listed in Alamoor, so that would be Marvin's. But it's not showing any vehicle charging station between Concord and Highway 220 over the west coast. So, again, if somebody has an economic development sort of incentive, not necessarily incentive, but if somebody's looking and has one of those vehicles, you know, they've got to be very careful about planning that trip. If they go to the one that's here in Alamoor, it's full, or, you know, it's occupied, they've got another issue. So, I mean, we definitely need to at least put it in.
If you're planning on one of one, and it's broken.
I like the idea of Marvin Station, though. I mean, that would draw something to the events down there, too.
But do we have internet down there?
You have to have two places to submit the application.
No, no, we can do just one.
Let's just get one.
But the grants, this is only coming, this is the level one grant, this is phase two. And they were only doing it at phase two. They were only doing two.
But so we only can get one?
We can get two.
We can get two.
Maybe.
You can get, you can ask for up to five.
Oh.
But.
Two's plenty, I think, because it's a start. Why don't we do the one here and then one down at Market Stations? I mean, do we have internet at Market?
I don't think so.
It is spotty, but they're working on it. CTC has been bringing something in for all the big events to, to make sure they have some, they're working on something, trying to get it there permanently.
With an O?
Miss Lott.
The city's where it's all, all one right. They've already figured out how they can plug it into their dryer. Their head office on how, how to do that, not the dryer necessarily, but any kind of.
We can plug it in.
Yeah. With appliances that you have. But I think we're going to have to keep up with the times and have at least one or two.
I think I'm hearing that we're wanting to ask for two, one for city hall, right here beside the city hall, down on the Marvin Station. That's what Council wants. Mr. Ferris, you got something to ask for?
Yes, I was going to maybe recommend, for, if council's wanting a second location, we still have some time. So if, you know, council can think about it a little bit more, staff can come back with possibly a recommendation as well, you know, we can evaluate what might be a good location, what has electricity, what has internet service. You know, we can always, at a future meeting, designate Marvin Station if somebody else doesn't want, but there could be some others that we're not thinking of right now.
My only, my only concern about the one there at first name is we're going to have a terrible time finding another parking lot.
Yes.
And I would have a little bit of concern taking two parking spaces and taking a lot of service basically all the time for this. That would be my only concern about that parking lot.
In the meantime, though, since the grant locations do in January, shouldn't we go in and try to go and poll the downtown government board directors or something to get their support in that we do move forward?
Sure.
You know, just so that we don't be behind the curve.
We will have to send them an email, make sure that I have it properly, they are not needing it anywhere.
And did you see, I thought it meant next Monday, the 14th.
Michael, I thought the council next Monday meeting.
Typically, the meeting in December is canceled. Let me see.
It's still on the calendar. But it's still, maybe they won't.
But it's not on this calendar.
Usually do not need it in December.
It's not on this calendar.
I don't have it online.
They don't need it until January.
But it's not on.
All right. I'll enter a motion that we move forward with two, and then we'll decide on the location. Motion by Councilmember Whitley, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Come around the room, I have nothing. Mr. Townsend. Mr. Hall.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Shears.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ferris.
Nothing other than the agenda add-on item for the.
I'll get it, it was quick, I'll get it. Mr. Dry.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hall.
Just remind you to get your mail, if you've got any back in the bag. One of the things that's in there is our United Way pledge. Just a question, and it's just because I keep seeing it, I'll add, see Keith back there. Why is it that we still have lights on at the PD, the old PD? Because I see them all with different lights and lighting. Tonight, they were on the front. And I'm just wondering, because I went up right by.
We're in and out, we're in and out of time to clean up.
Got you. Even at nighttime, even at nighttime?
Yeah.
Okay, well, they're on right now, okay? You got it. Yeah, plenty of lights on down here at nighttime. I mean, that's the only time I see them, I notice them. Just FYI, the Charters of Freedom, thank you for those of you that were able to come out. And thanks for, I thank Ross and your guys for what you all did, and Lisa and your crew for what you all did and what you're doing now. For anybody that's gone by, you've seen there's some work that's been done out there, even today, they're all doing it. On the 19th, help me, is that likely? That is, that's right, the 19th, January 19th, there is a meeting here in city hall of some of the new employee committees that employees are on. But, so we tried to find a time for there to be, a time for city employees to come out and to see what's going on out there. So somebody from Charters of Freedom will be downtown that day and doing an open house kind of thing in a tent to be able to tell people what, what that is all about. So that would be on January 19th. And I will just continue to echo what the mayor said at the day of the groundbreaking, and the folks from Charters of Freedom said. We are working on the dedication. And the day that the whole Charters of Freedom is dedicated will be at about 75% when it's done. So we're not sure when that's going to be. But if there is a day, and I continue to plead to my constituents as well as members of council, if there's a day in the spring that is important to the city of Alamoor and/or to the county of Stanley, we might need to work on that day being our, our dedication date. So that's, if folks and I have asked Dr. Brown before he left over the last couple weeks to come up with the date, because I know his, how much he is into history, so just know that that is, we're working on that, if there's a day that you can think of that we need to really look at, of holding the dedication. I. I do believe, and I was not on the last special events committee for downtown, but are they, I'm asking Lisa, Lisa, I'm having glasses on, so I really can't see you. Are we still doing the drive-through lights? Does that, is that still worked? Are we still coming up with that?
Are you talking about the addresses where people?
Yes, yes. Will you come and give an update on that so folks will know that that's in the works? If you don't mind, and I hate to put you on the spot, but I thought about it coming up here tonight. It was something that council does not know about, but the special events dreamed about. And if you'd update, I think that's great for this group to know.
I don't know that I have a whole lot of updates. But I know that, maybe even about tomorrow or Wednesday, that Tiffany's at the boardroom has solicited people who have Christmas lights that don't mind people driving by their house to see them. They're collecting those addresses, so I'll get those addresses from Tiffany and post those on our Facebook page for people to, as a family event or whatever, to drive around and see Christmas lights. And also to that, I know that the United Way and downtown business owners are partnering to decorate their storefronts, and then people can vote for a dollar for the storefront that they like the best.
Tiffany posted it on social media today, the addresses, so we can all go on there and share it.
Okay, there you go.
Very good. But that's something that came out of that, that group. And I guess the last thing I had, and I should have asked this before now, but I thought about it again on the way up here tonight. Are we doing anything for our staff for Christmas?
No, don't have anything planned. You know, we usually have the, but we had the, sort of, about a month or two ago, we had the event at Sea Lake Parks, that's, you know, the best we can come up with given the circumstances right now.
Gotcha, 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 gotcha. And that's all, thank you.
Ms. Lyle.
Well, I'm especially glad to welcome our new member. He is some man, I tell you. We ran against each other, we never lost our friendship. When he was gonna run again, he talked with me before he made up his mind. I've never seen anybody that I would believe would be a better councilman. And I'm proud to get to serve with him instead of against him. He was done, I can't even say what I think about you, but it's all positive.
Thank you very much, sir.
I don't think the council has probably changed much since you've been on. We get our motion and our stuff, it's right there with Augbridge and Martha Hughes. And it comes on around and at our pro team, we begin to add to all that that they said. And these guys in the middle were the ones that provided, provided for the vote. It's the same way with Austin and Star. So we're all happy to be together. All of you don't think a lot, we don't vote a lot. We're still a council together, and just because we can predict it doesn't mean we can do anything about it. So I hope that you will somehow lead the voting a little bit as you have done so many good things in Alamo, St. Louis, Alamo. Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you. And as you know, I do speak in the fire.
Mr. Ed. Let's move on to a couple of items. Number one, is consider renewal of an agreement with Southland temporary company to farm the Alamo Business Center property. This is an agreement we have with him to, sometimes it's going, sometimes it's caught and whatever, but he is under the understanding that we get out of the middle road, that we will not make anything back if he is trying to accept that as a loss, if he can continue to keep this agreement with us.
But do we have anything, do we have anything in writing, or is that just an add-on tonight? Or is there a reason that it's an add-on and we don't have a thing? Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I meant to pass it out before the meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
So, the current agreement expired in November 30th. And gentlemen, with that company contacting me, we spoke Friday. So that's why it wasn't on the agenda. It wasn't something that was a little bit time-sensitive, but also something we've done before. It's not completely brand-new, it would have held for the next agenda. But it's pretty straightforward, it acknowledges that some of the area cannot be farmed, and just about 150 acres is available to farming, and it's a fee of $9,000 a year. The potential risk for us developing the property is with the farmer, and there is a map included where the proposed road, as we best know now, would go, as well as utilities. So there's areas to avoid. Of course, it has been farmed over the years, so he's only farming in the spots that were previously farmed.
Since this is in front of us tonight, one of the things that I had on my list, and I decided we'll do the same thing about it, since I knew we were doing something with this, was right down when you come down the road or come across 52 by that path, you still see, the sign is, the sign is in the middle of all of the vegetation. It continued to be in all of that vegetation. And the word on that sign doesn't lend an invitation to anyone wanting to come there. So with that said, you know, do we, do we enter into it if we're gonna do something with it? Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, do we do that if we're Thursday night, we're making a decision to or not to do something moving forward, so.
Now, if you're telling the other council, if you want to hold this until Thursday night, we can do that.
The current one ended November 30th, is that right?
That's correct.
Well, to ask this a question, if we, if we would enter this agreement, and again, I just got this, if we, if someone happened in three months from now, and we need to get out of it, could we get out of it?
Yes, he knows that if we go out there and damage his property, he will not be reimbursed for it. He will accept that change.
You didn't want it?
We wouldn't, council wants to approve the agreement. Is that number?
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Augbridge to approve the agreement, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion.
Here it is.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Next is to discuss the Five Points intersection. Councilmember Mayor remember, we've been trying to figure out some ways to enhance the Five Points intersection. And we have requested in our build grant money for a couple of years, and we haven't been funded for that. So I asked our engineer for DODT, did he have any money? And what we're looking for in particular was getting rid of the old wood poles, put in metal poles with the old green stoplights, and put in pedestrian vehicles. Ballpark, that's about $325,000. I asked him if he could come up with that, and he has been looking for a way to do that. Well, today, I and Chris, and Chris is on the RPO, got an email that they would like to look at making a roundabout down there. Councilmember Mayor remember, probably 15 years ago, there was discussion about a roundabout down there, and it was determined at that time, we just could not make the size work. Well, they have started approving now a much smaller roundabout. And council should have, I got an email, they've made it late this afternoon with a video of what they're approving now. And it's a very small roundabout, I still don't know if it can be made to work. He's gotta look at it and see. Our problem down here is, we don't have four roads intersecting, we have five of them. So he don't know that he can even make that work. But before he spends the time in doing all that, I first want to know, is council interested in putting a roundabout there? Those men spend a lot of time on, that's not even the interest. So what is council's mission? Are we willing to consider a roundabout? Ms. Hall.
Is there, is there a way that that email, because I don't know that everybody has seen that email, is there a way to open up that email on that screen and watch that video for us to watch that video? Because it's a small.
Michael, if you have to do it, I'll send it to you, you tell me if you have to do it.
I don't know.
Have you got it? Bring it up, if you would, please.
Look at that.
The small roundabout.
Yeah, it's small.
And I think it works great, but that's, I told you.
I got all my email on laptop, so I got connected to screen.
That's the problem. I think it's an outside laptop, I don't think it's outside, that's, I've had that.
Is Owen in his desk?
I can probably email up to somebody that can connect to.
Ron's got it.
I'm at least not with RPO by the way, so.
Is Owen, do you know if I'm gonna take his desk, Mike?
I'm calling.
That is a grand idea, if that would work.
All right, I see you're gonna do it something, so I'll.
Look at that.
Just a minute, I want to get it up, and I'll email it to you.
Look at that.
There's another question, and I guess we can have some discussion later, is what impact that have on the.
I asked that very, I asked that very same question. And he said it actually is safer with a roundabout.
Pedestrian, actually, before, the car will pull up the roundabout itself. So it's a redesign, it's not like, it wouldn't be like the one, the one, the one, the connect.
So the subway, you know, has a labor.
Down there?
Only small. Yeah, you want, you want the trucks. My concern is that on the show, it's not, you know, adjusted here, is that all?
Well, there's just a lot of foot traffic down there now, causing fire.
It's gonna be continuous traffic.
There you usually have businesses within the circle, that's a concern, I think.
They would probably have to take some of that corner there where Lily and Victor are. It probably, it probably would have helped for some of the, where it comes in, of the, plus there's rock and water and body. But the real problem down there is, of course, the drain is a problem.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's plenty of infrastructure down there. I think, one, I talked to Robert Martin in Pito, he said it's not as much the infrastructure to carry the waters. A lot of times those drains get clogged.
Well, we have just recently added an additional one too.
Yeah.
On our street, we can't do anything on the other streets, but we added one on our street.
So the question you have tonight then is.
Owen, when you pull that up, that email, look at it, right under the one I just sent you, you'll see a link. I'm talking to Owen, he's upstairs, I guess.
But the question for you and us tonight is, do we want?
Are we interested in a roundabout? That's the very first question we need to ask.
And then which engineer? Then which engineer's gonna look at it?
DOT engineer.
That's what I thought, is that?
Exactly, he's actually a contractor. Y'all know Mark Freeman, I saw him at DODT years ago, even if he used to come to Alamo by the bed. But he's a, he's with a private firm now.
Oh, yeah. Can you see that banner?
When Michael be with.
Not the call, he's saying, he's pressing it, so. Talking of glass.
All right, there it is. As you can see, it's much smaller. And you see the pool intersections, the big thing here is, can he add that deep intersection? We don't know.
All right, but my question is, that looks like it's in the middle of country. We're talking about, we're talking about here in the middle of the city.
He actually says this is what's being used in a lot of cities now. He said this is the trend now, go to the smaller, big cities.
That's actually smaller than what was at the bell tower, is he stayed on Hillborough Street.
Oh, yeah.
You have the same questions I had, Bill, but he, he.
Parker were trying to cross the street going to lunch, and he got off the street.
What he's talking about is, you notice you go to a median, you stop. You don't go all the way to the end, you get partway, stop in the median, then you keep, so it's safer, because it's safer to walk on these streets, I think.
And he, he's like, the driver man, the red one, passing series, and so.
I, I would.
Owen, got it about the 316 mark, somewhere along there, and he's, don't get to go over it about 316.
This technology has its benefits.
I would just encourage council to see more, as many renders as possible. I think they can elaborate, but they can actually do a rendering of the intersection down there at Five Points. And kind of show it graphically, so you can see property closure, how it'll work, you know. Not, of course, big, but just something visually that kind of, they can do that, sort of.
So the engineer, he's not aware of any, that got five intersections?
Yeah, he said that was gonna throw, that's what you had to work at.
You got the off off before you get the intersection.
He's at 327 there.
Yeah, I think council will have to see some drawings and see some DODT analysis. Be comfortable, traffic circles, roundabouts like this, and have our kind of traffic flow, pedestrian volume that we're gonna have. Be able to work with it and make suggestions if we need.
If there's somebody crossing right back there.
Black streets are designed just like that here at Market Station, where you can go to the middle stop and then go the rest of them. The narrow streets just switch right on across. I probably don't know if he might even remember this, Ms. Hall, but we had a review of Citizens County Council at least 15 years ago. And they were trying to actually do the design and asking us to consider it. And they, they have struggled with getting the, getting the, to, because they were looking at a big size.
I, if the questions you can touch me on, I'll send out to Rocky or Alba.
Maybe we'll go with a draw, if you can make it work. But if you're not interested, let's count the front.
Is there anything close to this, or anything close by that has this smaller private roundabout? I can check. DODT is pushing roundabouts heavily. And if we just entertain the option, they will give a lot of information, and they'll do everything to make it work, accommodate this particular intersection.
You said that DODT is pushing roundabouts heavily, is that based on statistics that roundabouts are, you have less fatalities and accidents and things like that?
It's everything about safety and flood. I mean, just traffic safety, partially, just, I mean, there's no way to really govern those, I mean, it's just because, just, these things just are, 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 a lot of people, once you get used to them, they work much better, and they are safer when done properly. So, and DODT, and they, they cost a lot less to actually incorporate.
I don't rule it out prematurely, but I definitely wanna see some.
Is everybody more or less okay with moving forward? We're not ruling it out here, we're okay with moving forward, getting drawn to bring it back in. Ms. Hall.
Let me just, Hillsboro at the bell tower. I think, I know there are two, or there not three on Hillsboro now?
I think there was.
I think there's, there's an old one, the very first one downtown.
The one right there, the State Point Tribune, bell tower, I think there's no one.
Oh, exactly, yes. So they have them there on Hillsboro, and you think of all the foot traffic on Hillsboro in the middle of campus. I know coming out of Pullman Park, when they first, when they first built that one, it was nuts, because it was like too many people going at home time, but there's a lot of, a lot of pedestrian traffic right through there.
Could we find, could, may I, when you communicate back with them, will you, could we find out from them where there are some close enough to do the dimension?
That size, that size, with five streets.
Well, that's, that's the problem. I don't think it's gonna be a five street, but that's the reason he's working, he's got a side, he can make it work. He don't know there's enough room for doing five street.
Gotcha.
He may come back and say that.
And I hear you say that they might come back and say that they really can't do it anyway. But they, they came to us and asked if we would consider that. So I'm assuming they've kind of done a general look see and kind of feel like that's, that might be possible.
The DOT engineer, I'm talking about Brett, is trying to find us some spot money, safety money, to do something down there. But that's the safety issue we're trying to address with all the students crossing that stop. So that's where they come back with this. And Lee, correct me on the number, who said that? There's been three fatalities in?
They said four.
Eight, eight thousand roundabouts effectively, is that right?
And go back to spot money. Spot money is a lot easier to get.
Crossed.
Yeah, because safety money is a different bucket of money than regular stiff funds. So those are more readily available for safety issues. And that's, if we can kind of sell it under that, it'll happen a lot sooner in the world.
Lee, we're gonna kind of move forward and see what he can come up with.
Roger, that'd be great. And I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, if you'll mention something real quick.
Sure. Should have added earlier, just to remind everybody, you may have seen, may not have had a chance, but sent an email late this afternoon regarding the news release that announces an hour of community survey. It's something we've talked about recently. Staff, but it's recommended that we do a community survey. We talked about it in our strategic plan session. So we have an entire media campaign planned to publicize the survey, as I said before. The point is that we're trying to get input from the community regarding the future of the community, likes, dislikes, what they'd like to see. Interest, where should we focus our efforts, because as we all discussed, we represent the citizens of our community. And we're making a real good effort to try to involve, or just do a better job of getting outreach into areas of Alamooral or populations that usually don't participate in communities. Yes, I'm sure you're familiar with surveys. Response rates are pretty low. So we will do our best to disseminate the survey from every method that we know that we can use, given our resources. And try to have good participation in the survey regarding the feedback. That will help council as we help have the results in, so that when we go to our spring, late winter, early spring planning sessions, that some of that information will be available and help guide future decisions, future initiatives of the city, budget decisions and so forth. So I just want to remind everybody that on website, social media presence, it is available now. It'll be something in the newspaper. We'll have paper copy, electronic copies. We'll be mailing postcards to homeowners or residents asking for their feedback and again, sharing all the different ways they can participate in the community. So just want to get that word out there that the community survey is now available.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'll overturn an entertaining motion that we adjourned to a closed session pursuant to Milwaukee County General Statute. 143, 31811A, 1, 3, 4, and 5. To prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state. To consult with the city attorney, economic development, and to discuss real estate. Motion by councilman Augers.
Say it.
Say it by councilman Review. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.